I'm Liz St Louis, I'm an Assistant Director for Smart Cities at Sunderland City Council. And a massive thank you for joining us today. And we're absolutely delighted to be taking part in Digital Leaders Week. Here in Sunderland, our leaders across the health, the education and the business sectors have set a smart city vision, recognising the paramount importance of next generation digital connectivity right across our city. So we can deliver a whole range of digital and data-driven solutions that make a real difference to people's lives and importantly, leaving no one and nowhere behind. It's fair to say it's been a busy last 18 months, but we've made massive strides in securing investment in that underpinning connectivity and in parallel delivering a whole range of use cases. We now have some of the fastest free wifi speeds in the country, benefiting local people and visitors to Sunderland. We're working with the automotive sector, delivering a connected automated logistics centre of excellence and our smart video sensor devices and monitoring vehicle cycle and pedestrian flows for key routes in the city, enabling real-time interventions and informing future initiatives and urban planning. Today though, we're very excited to be able to showcase our work in the field of health and social care. We'll focus on assistive technologies and hear from leaders, installers, therapists and customers alongside our project manager, our software developer and one of our digital leaders in the city to really bring our technology-enabled practices to life, which I'm sure you'll agree are making an impactful and measurable difference to people's lives. We'll also talk a bit about technology, how technology is helping to shape new models of connectivity and service delivery, particularly in these difficult times. And finally, we'll hear about progress towards our Great North Care Record. I've been truly inspired by the accounts and I hope you are too. So please enjoy. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Emma Anderson and I manage a range of services for Sunderland City Council and Sunderland Care and Support. The focus of the service we provide is to facilitate safety and independence for children and adults who have disabilities. As an occupational therapist of 29 years, I've spent my career looking for solutions to the problems encountered by my customers in their everyday lives. Washing and dressing, eating and drinking, communicating and connecting with people, helping others to understand how we feel, all of these things can become hurdles to overcome. The roots of my profession lie in the rehabilitation of soldiers returning from World War One with physical and psychological injuries, looking for ways to re-engage in everyday life. Therapists have long since used equipment to help people do things that they can't do for themselves so that they can live independent and fulfilling lives. Over the years, I've watched this equipment become increasingly automated and therapists becoming more sophisticated in their deployment of equipment in care planning. As assistive technology began to emerge, it seemed to us a natural evolution that brought with it opportunities for our customers to achieve even greater aspirations. In recent years, we've seen health and social care prescribers recognise their collective responsibility to ensure that equipment is widely accessible and fit for purpose. The agenda to integrate health and social care equipment stores saw the development of Sunderland's community equipment service, which affords an opportunity to extend the offer to modern equipment in the form of assistive technology. We began working with a small range of devices to test the benefits with our customers. We also found that some families had already invested in products like Alexa, but hadn't necessarily thought about how they could apply the functionality in these devices to create safety and independence for their loved ones. We began to think about our existing services and how AT complemented what we already had. Telecare has provided invaluable support, particularly for older people, but we recognise this as a reactive service responding at times of crisis. We saw that assistive technology provided an opportunity for families to provide proactive care and through routine monitoring devices, it was possible for families to spot the potential for problems before they'd happened and prevent that crisis from arising. Later on, we'll talk about how we are exploring this in Sunderland with the development of the Sheila app. When a crisis does arise, AT provides families with the ability to respond to this themselves, reducing the necessity for the intrusion of formal services any sooner than they're really needed. Moving forward, we're keen to explore the potential for deploying assistive technology to support healthcare. Our technical team is engaged with health partners in the Lucy project. Lucy is an app that enables remote monitoring of vital signs and is being deployed by our nursing teams to support patients with respiratory problems to self-monitor and seek urgent remote clinical consultation, which enables adjustments in medication, for example, to be rapidly initiated and prevents the necessity for a hospital visit or even a hospital admission. Our technical team meets the patient at home, sets up the tablet device and demonstrates not just the app, but also the additional functionality of a tablet. Through this initiative, we've seen customers learn to connect with friends, family, to online shop, identify communities of interest. This has significantly reduced feelings of isolation and promoted a sense of wellbeing and independence. More recently, we've deployed tablet devices into Sunderland's intermediate care centre, a bed-based unit that supports people leaving hospital with short-stay rehabilitation before they return home. Through the tablet, we were able to support residents to maintain contact with family and friends whilst in isolation as a result of COVID-19, and this brought a much-needed uplift to their rehabilitation experience. Sunderland Care and Support's technical team has been key to our model. Our installers continually scan the market for new developments and work with occupational therapists, nurses, social workers and families to create solutions to the problems that they bring. Equipment is provided on a long-term loan basis, however, we often find that families wish to purchase devices themselves. Our installers fit and demonstrate the equipment and will even help people explore the functionality in phones or tablets that they might already own but didn't quite know how to use. We see this as the start of a journey and we're excited about the potential to bring all of these developments together with initiatives like the Great North Care Record to enhance our health and social care offer. Now, I'd like you to hear from some of our therapists, installers and customers about the benefits of technology in care.
My name is Paul, I work with the tech team at Sunderland Care and Support as an equipment officer. I helped to develop and install assistive technology for people with specific and sometimes complex needs and disabilities. As an example of what we do, I'd like to recount a successful assistive technology deployment that the team fulfilled. We were supporting a lady whose grandfather had dementia and had started to wander and this was causing her obvious worry and stress. Grandad had been returned home previously by police and the granddaughter had received calls from concerned friends who'd spotted him out wandering. We fitted various sensors to grandad's house to allow his granddaughter and other family members to see if he had left his home by using a smartphone with a simple application on it. If he had left, they would see his whereabouts on the same smartphone using a supplied GPS device. And during our follow-up process, where we check if the equipment that we've prescribed is working as it should with the family members, his granddaughter said she was so relieved at being alerted as soon as grandad's door opened and she could prepare to guide him home if necessary. In fact, she'd brought him home from a little wander in the high street that very week by utilising the equipment that we had assessed for and installed. This is the kind of difference that we're seeing technology make. A family can see if their loved ones could be in a possible danger or in an area that they aren't comfortable or familiar with, and they're now able, with the aid of the assistive technology, to do something about it in an unobtrusive, discreet and a much more personal manner.
Hi, my name's Carissa, I'm a community occupational therapist. I've been using technology in my practice to promote safety and independence alongside equipment packages, facilitate prompts and memory recall and to support families in their informal caring roles. I would like to share with you some words that have been given to me by one of my customers. Over the past few weeks, technology and equipment have changed my life drastically. I suffer from FSH muscular dystrophy, which has left me practically immobile. Over the last year, I have had many falls and due to muscle weakness, I can't get up without help. At one point, I was on the floor for hours as I couldn't access my phone until help came and my son lifted me up. When Carissa suggested to me an Alexa, I readily agreed. Alexa enables me to call somebody when I fall, so I'm not dependent on my phone and it also reminds me every Friday to order my prescriptions, which I can often forget to do so. Technology has given me some independence. And I'd also like to share with you some words from another one of my families. Following lengthy hospital and nursing home stay this year, we managed to get my mum home on the 3rd of July, thanks to her occupational therapist, Carissa, and assigned social worker. Mam is bed-bound and reliant upon a care package put in place which provides four care visits per day. Myself and my brother provide overnight care and this is shared between us. Following a meeting with Carissa, it was suggested that an Amazon Echo Dot Alexa could be provided if we felt it would be of help to Mam. I agreed it would be very useful to have and it was installed on the 8th of July. Alexa was set up through my Android phone, a link to my contacts. This enables me to leave my Mam for periods during the day and she is able to call me if needed. It gives me great peace of mind to know that my Mam can call me, I live close by and can be with her in minutes. Following the installation, I had laminated cards made with prompts which allow my Mam to ask the following: Alexa, call whoever it is she needs to call. Alexa, what time is it? Alexa, how is the weather? Alexa, play BBC news. And Alexa, play Sky News. Alexa, play Classic FM radio. Although we have not subscribed to the Amazon Music, we are able to have general music played from my Mam's era, which has provided good entertainment. Having the Echo Dot installed has provided Mam with an excellent source of information and it also gives me peace of mind knowing that she can call when I'm not there. To summarise, I think it's very evident that technology is making a huge difference to the quality of life of disabled people and their families.
Hi, I'm Kelly, I'm an occupational therapist in the community rehab team and I'm based within Farborough Court, which is a bed-based service. And we use a range of technology to support discharges from Farborough Court and to support a customer's ongoing needs. And a little bit of a case study around one I've done recently is where I provided some assistive technology for a customer returning home from Farborough Court. And the customer was really anxious as she'd been away from home quite a long time and our daughters were both anxious. One worked full-time and one lived away from the area and she was a high falls risk. So the assistive technology we looked at was the Alexa to provide prompts around the house, around sort of using our walking equipment to remind her to have some meals and with medication. We provided some overnight lights which would reduce anxieties around getting up for toileting. And some sensors to monitor movement and activity which allowed the daughters to monitor activity and movement around the house and on the stairs, which reduced anxieties also for the family members. This prevented an admission into extra care, which the family initially wanted, but the customer wanted to return home, so assistive technology helped her stay in her old home.
Hi, my name is Gary, I look after my mum Marie, who is 84 years old with dementia. I've moved in to look after her, she does a lot of things herself but needs help and needs reminders constantly. The technology just makes life easier, it helps with the little day-to-day things with sensors. Sensors on the cupboard doors, sensors on the fridges, just means that I can check that my mum has eaten and is up and about. Sensors on the pillbox means I know that she's taking her tablets and it's nice to see her arguing with Alexa instead of fighting with me about taking her tablets. And it's a nice delay that Alexa repeats herself and actually has a conversation with my mum. The night time is obviously makes things much easier with the door alarms and motion sensors. My mum has wandered on occasions and once, two buses later, ended up in the town centre. So obviously being able to sleep with half an eye open and relying on the sensors to wake you up if there's a problem makes life so much simpler. I also work away from home quite a lot, so there's that panic that I'm leaving my mum and will she be all right? With motion sensors in the house and that camera facility, particularly in the back garden, if my mum's out, she has fallen before and she won't wear a panic alarm, she doesn't need it, there's nothing wrong with her. So having that ability of being able to actually work out that she's up and about and she's okay is amazing. The wireless door lock technology would be fine with smart locks, it just gives you that option. And a wireless doorbell just means that if I am away and somebody comes to the door, I can check that she's all right and everything is good. It makes my life easier, to make my mum's life easier, that's what is the important bit.
Hi, I'm Dave Young and I work for the council's Business Development and Resilience team. Part of my role is to help managers to redevelop their services. You've heard from your colleagues about the challenges they face and how they hope digital transformation may help. To address these leaders in our direct set aside, just over a million pounds to invest in bringing about some of that transformation. One of the first ideas to be awarded some of that finance came from a social work team manager, whose idea was to attempt to use consumer-based technology like smart speakers, home automation and GPS locating to support care recipients and their family carers. The small pilot was successful and proved the manager's theory. Also, the feedback that we got from the small number of care participants in the pilot was hugely positive. Following on from this, leaders in adult social care took the decision to attempt to scale this initiative up. This resulted in the establishment of a small assistive technology prescribing and installation team. The tech offer was gradually rolled out to care customers who were happy to take it up. We also produced some how-to videos which demonstrated residents how they could use their own consumer technology and apply it for care purposes themselves, just like the council were doing. At the same time, care professionals were telling us that the data being produced by this technology would be useful to them in doing their daily job. Well, we knew it was possible to collect the data, but we weren't sure how this could be done. This led to the establishment of a larger project called the IoT National Testbed. The testbed brought together the local government association, Sunderland CCG, digital catapult and social care staff. The testbed project resulted in building a prototype software platform and installing devices in the homes of 75 care participants. The results were evaluated by a company called Urban Forside, who specialise in tech and smart city deployment. The evaluation highlighted that the use of technology would definitely improve care services for both end-users and also care professionals. It also told us that the core data platform needed to be improved if this were to be scaled up any further. So where are we now? We are improving the software and hardware in line with what the evaluation told us. Improvement user groups have also fed in their ideas into Solcom, our software development partner. Carers told us they don't want multiple apps and want care functionality in all one app. They also want something easy to use. They wanted to be able to share their app with other members of their family to participate in care. And they also wanted to control and set care notifications for themselves and choose how they got their notifications. So what next? Well, with current progress, we should have redeveloped software, fully tested and in ready to roll out early spring. I'll now hand over to our software partner, Solcom, who will tell you a little bit more.
Hello, I'm Keith Chessel, I'm CEO of Solcom Limited. Solcom's a software company specialising in cloud and leading-edge technologies. We were very much attracted by the opportunity to work with Sunderland City Council on this groundbreaking and challenging project. We were told we won the project on Christmas Eve 2018. I remember feeling both excitement and trepidation as this was going to be a monster call. The challenge of the project was to take the working prototype Sunderland had created and move it to a scaled platform which could accommodate the city population. Our working relationship with Sunderland's team has gone from strength to strength. We're working as one group with one common aim. We're open and honest with each other and we're commercially sensible. A relationship built on trust fosters a great working environment. Guided by the expertise of the Sunderland team, our developers have done some of their best ever work. There's a much bigger picture, many other regions would benefit from this development. Solcom can foster that expansion, bringing commercial and technological benefits back to Sunderland, just as we've done working with Sunderland NHS. It's not possible to show you the full extent of the system in this brief moment, but I can show you what an end-user would see, looking after someone who has a smart system installed in their household. It's typically a phone interface, but it will work on anything with a browser. What we have here is a screen showing the status of a household with the Sunderland Smart Systems sensors installed. The screen would be shown on a smartphone or tablet or Windows PC, in fact, anything with a browser. The data from the home can be shared with family and friends and they all get this kind of screen. In this example, we can see that the user's home has generated an alert, the back door's been left open. And if you look at the data for that sensor, we can see that it's been left open for two hours. That will have caused an email alert, a text message or a push notification to be sent to family and friends' phones that are interested in the care of this person. If we look, we can set actions and the number of actions will be dependent on your level of concern. So in this case, we've got quite a few actions and we can see that any day of the week, if the back door's been left open for more than five minutes, we'll generate an alert. It can be less than this, people can set an alert for when you get first movement in the morning or for example, if the back door's opened after midnight. Going back to these screens, we can see what's happening in the household. We can look at patterns of movement and activity and compare them on a day-to-day basis so that we can be... So that we can observe changes in behaviour. And if you look at this example, just coming from a real household, we can see there's much more activity in the kitchen on the weekend. Using this icon, we can share this data with other family and friends users and of course, the Sunderland Council care team can view this at any time.
I feel the benefits of Sheila are potentially multifold for our carers and customers. There is the potential that Sheila will allow us as rehabilitation therapists to carry on working in that way when the customer returns home. So currently, we work with the customer in a bed-based service for a short period of time, working towards realistic goals and targets, help the customer build confidence to regain functional skill and ability before they return home. Sheila will allow us as therapists to carry on that work when the customer has returned home, being able to review their levels of activity, provide the customer with encouragement and feedback and set new targets with them for the coming weeks. It would also allow us potentially to carry on our assessment with customers once they have gone home. So we will always make sure that the customer is safe and well when they return home and has a care package in place. We might be able to adjust that care package if Sheila can provide us with the evidence to say, well, actually, the customer is able to go and make a drink and make a snack and they're doing that regularly. We might be able to then have a little bit more bespoke care and support planning with Sheila giving us some reassurance that that customer is able to carry out that activity. I think it also has the potential to provide a massive amount of reassurance for families and formal carers who are worried that their loved one isn't moving about, isn't getting up and doing what they need to do to be able to stay safe and well at home. And as therapists, we know that we should be encouraging regular activity where safe to do so, to prevent falls, to prevent frailty. So being able to use the information that comes out of Sheila to help customers understand why it's important to move about could have a real positive effect on their wellbeing. And if Sheila ever gets to the point where she can learn somebody's routine and someone deviates from that routine, potentially we could use Sheila as a really proactive tool to flag up when something's not going well for somebody and do something before we have a crisis. I'm really positive about how Sheila can be deployed in our service.
Hi, my name's Lindsay, I'm a senior practitioner in the Occupational Therapy Service. Sheila, social health-enabling independent living app. For me as an OT, this is really exciting because what this is going to enable us to do is, with consent, best interests, is to be able to use smart technology, monitors, sensors to understand how a person functions at home. So we'll be able to look and see how and when they make their meals, are they making their meals, are they taking their medication, are they taking them at the right time? So if we have somebody that potentially is at higher risk of falls, whereas now we react to that fall or we prevent as much as we can, it may well be that Sheila can give us some information that perhaps the medications were taken at the wrong time, they're not being drinking enough fluids, they're not sleeping during the night. So we may be able to say, well, actually, the reason for that fall was poor hydration or taking medication at the wrong time or very fatigued because they're not sleeping during the night. And this information is invaluable to enable us as OTs, as other professionals, as family, as carers, to make sure that their loved one is safe, is as independent as they can be for as long as they can be. So I'm really excited to see what the future holds in terms of development moving forward. And I know in Sunderland, we've been heavily involved with Sheila and the development of Sheila. And I am really proud that we have Sheila and that we can move forward with that. So looking forward to the future. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Dr David Dunn and I am the Chief Exec of Sunderland Software City. The assistive technology strategy operated by Sunderland City Council for me has two fundamental ambitions at its centre. The first is to ensure the residents of Sunderland are given the best service in health and social care to ensure they can remain healthier and live independently for longer. The second is to utilise technology wherever appropriate and wherever possible to make that end-user experience better whilst ensuring suitable efficiencies for the council and its dedicated team of staff. It's on this second point, as the Chief Exec of Sunderland Software City, I've seen the council really pioneer their engagement with the technology sector, from their procurement to their deployment. I've seen them work in new, forward-thinking ways. As the project moves forward, I'm confident technology will remain as a pivotal role within the assistive technology strategy of Sunderland. In doing so, I see more and more opportunities arise for new and established technology companies to partner on the journey towards a healthier city. So I hope you join me in keeping an eye out in what's going on in Sunderland's assistive technology strategy.
I'd like to talk now a bit about how we've used technology to support us in our practice and the delivery of social care to our customers. So in my service, we deliver occupational therapy, physiotherapy, wheelchair services, we provide specialist equipment for people, we adapt their home environments, we deliver rehab and rehabilitation to people in their own homes or in some of our bed-based settings. So a lot of our work requires us to spend time in different environments, wherever the person is, so whether that's in their own home, whether it's at school, whether it's in a hospital, our workers are constantly out and about working with their customers out in the field. We're also a part of a much wider multidisciplinary team, so we connect constantly with social workers, nurses, doctors, and they help to give us the picture that we need to bring effective care plans together for our customers. One of the resources that we know is the most precious to us is time and it occurred to us that quite often, our workers needed to come back to the office base to undertake what were effectively quite administrative tasks. We started to think about how we could work in a more agile way and connected with our ICT team who helped us to think through the hardware and the connectivity that we might need to be able to work much more remotely in more agile ways. As a result, we're now able to conduct many more activities whilst we're still in someone's home that previously we would have come back to the office base to do. Initially, workers were concerned that maybe if we were sitting with laptops and the customer, they may feel a little disconnected from us. The reality is that customers have given hugely positive feedback about being able to work with us in real time to create those care plans, to connect with those other members of the MDT, to place orders, to send letters, to do all of those things that previously we'd come back to the office to do, we can now do together in partnership with the customer and that's been hugely beneficial for us. COVID-19 brought with it a new challenge and this time the challenge was around how we manage those things that until now, we've thought we needed to be in face-to-face contact with customers to deliver. Clearly, face-to-face contact brings with it infection risks and we wanted to minimise this for our customers and for our staff, but also continue to keep our business turning. Microsoft Teams has been hugely beneficial for us as a service and even though we've worked from home, we've been able to and even though we've worked from home, we've been able to connect with each other every day as if we were still in the office base. We're becoming much more sophisticated in our use of this and having gone from perhaps one-to-one conversations on Teams, we can now hold service meetings with over sixty people present. It occurred to us that if we were able to remain as connected through Microsoft Teams as we are, surely this could have benefits for our customers. We work closely with colleagues in ICT and also in our communications teams and they helped us to develop a set of helpful instructions that we could provide for our customers so that they can video conference with us remotely. This has worked incredibly well. The connectivity that it brings us has enabled us to continue doing things that previously we would have done face-to-face remotely. Wheelchair clinics are entirely possible with our customer in one building and us in another. Careful instruction between the assessor and the customer enables us to see the things we need to see. Perhaps in the past, we might have done a joint visit between an occupational therapist and the severe to look at the environment in which somebody lives. Now, we can reduce the amount of professional contact that we need in the customer's property by video conferencing and perhaps the severe might be in the property and the therapist on the outside. Equally with careful instruction to the customer about the things we need to see and the things we need to measure, we're able to do this on occasion with no professional in the property at all. It's hugely time-saving, it continues to keep the customer engaged and connected in their care planning. It's also helped us deliver things like undergraduate education. We'd struggled to think about how we would deliver this when our students couldn't necessarily be with us all of the time and equally how we manage the professional development of our newly qualified staff. We've developed instructional videos that we're able to share with both customers and colleagues that help us still connect with people, provide instruction and deliver the support that we need to do, even though we're not necessarily together. Now I'd like you to hear from some of our practitioners about how technology has helped them deliver their practice.
Hello, my name's Alison Watson, I'm the registered manager of Farnborough Court. The Covid nineteen pandemic has affected all aspects of daily living for people. When you become unwell through an acute illness, injury or other event, you need your loved ones around you. The majority of our customers have had a stay in hospital where visiting has been restricted. Upon discharge from hospital, customers then need to isolate for another fourteen days whilst in Farnborough Court. This makes it extremely difficult for customers and their families and whilst they do appreciate the need to keep people safe, having no contact with their loved ones can slow progress, it can affect their health and wellbeing. Families just often want to see their loved one, to hear them, to know that they're doing well, that they're progressing with their view to coming home. Communication is essential and during this time, we support customers and families to keep in touch via video calling. People often see each other for the first time in weeks and it can be very emotive. It helps greatly in the person's recovery, it gives them the motivation to progress, to want to go home, to engage back with their family members. We have multidisciplinary team meetings and we wouldn't want everybody coming into Farnborough Court. We need to keep people safe and we need to keep staff safe. So we do a lot of the meetings via the video link, which means every person can have their say with the customer about how things has progressed and what the positive outcomes are for the person and how soon we can progress them to discharge. It means everybody who needs to be involved in the customer's stay is involved.
Hi, my name's Rachel Einson and I am an occupational therapist and I work for the wheelchair services at Sunderland City Council. At the moment, we're using digital technology to support us in our job roles a lot and it's been really helpful. One of the things in our team in wheelchairs is that every morning we have a team's catch-up. That's an opportunity where we discuss new referrals, we can talk about complex cases, we can talk about service developments and the allocations for that day are made to the wheelchair assessors and it's a really good way to professionally connect, even though we're not in the same room or office as we used to be. Another way that I've used Microsoft Teams is that I've actually carried out some of my wheelchair assessments using video conferencing. I've worked with the Regional Spinal Injuries Unit down in Middlesbrough to assess inpatients who were resident there but were from our region so that they were going to be discharged back to Sunderland. And what the team's video call has allowed me to do is to see that patient, see how they're sitting, look at their posture, to chat face-to-face with the professionals who are supporting that patient and the physios, the OTs, the nurses, get some background information. I can also ask for that patient to be measured so that I can see exactly what size they are so that I can order them the right wheelchair. And it's worked really well so that when patients have been discharged from the spinal injuries unit back up to region, I've already ordered the right equipment for them and it's ready for them seamlessly, the right equipment at the right time. So in that way, the video conferencing has been invaluable. Another way that our service has used technology is that because we're not seeing our customers quite as much face-to-face as we used to, we've made some really short sort of instructional videos. It might be basic things like how to open or fold a wheelchair, how to use an accessory in a wheelchair. And what we're able to do is to send that out to the customers either via email or a WhatsApp or YouTube link so that they have that extra little bit of support, the support we would have given to them if we'd seen them personally in clinic, but we can't at the moment. So that's been really invaluable to know that the customers are supported, that we're here for them and technology's been great to use in that way too.
Hello, my name's Julie Lane and I work in the neighbourhood directorate for Sunderland City Council. I'm here today just to let you know about the work we're doing around the Great North Care Record. The Great North Care Record is a digital tool that allows a way of sharing health and social care information between the different parts of health and social care staff. It covers the three point six million people living in the North East and Cumbria and I'm currently the operational lead for Sunderland's role within that. What the Great North Care Record means is that information held about individuals such as illnesses, hospital stays, medications, social care interventions or safeguarding information can be accessed by professionals involved in the person's care in a digital tool. The benefits of this solution are it will allow information to be shared digitally and reduces the need for many telephone calls and paper-based records. The records will reflect the most current and up-to-date information which will allow a more timely and joined-up response to someone's health and social care needs. It also means for our customers, it reduces the need for them to repeat the same information in several different settings and in several different ways. In Sunderland, we are currently implementing the Great North Care Record and I'll just give you a little bit of progress that we've made. So we have signed up to the subscription with CERNA, which is the health information tool and we've also purchased the Liquid Logic module for the integration of the health information into our social care records. We've done a lot of work with health and social care partners in order to get everyone signed up to the information governance agreement so we can now share the information on an agreed basis. We've done huge amounts of communications, both with internal and external stakeholders so everybody's on the same page and understanding the need for the implementation of these records. We've completed the configuration of the system in agreeing what information will be shared and the frequency of that information, the format of that information. And the next steps will be taken is moving into UAT, User Acceptance Testing of the system, where we will start to exchange information in a test environment to make sure it's fully functional. As part of that, we will also be developing training for our own staff on when they should access those health records and how they should be accessed and how we can inform appropriately timely joined-up care. We also work really closely with our regional partners. So all of the learning that Sunderland is doing as, as we go through the implementation can be shared with our colleagues so when they come to do their own implementation, they can learn from the issues that we found or the concerns that we found.
Thank you again for joining us today and I hope you found the session beneficial. We'd love to connect with like-minded people, so if you'd like to find out more about our work or get in touch, please visit our website, sunderlandarsmartcity.com. Thank you.